All right, it's 5:30. I'd like to call this board meeting to
the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, public visitors. Good to see everybody. It's always encouraging to see a good turnout at these meetings, so thanks for coming. And our presenter was weathered tonight, so we'll go right on into the principal reports. Going first?
I am.
Okay.
Our fall third grade OST scores were released in early December. And congrats to our third grade students with a 59% of them testing proficient. The state average was 48%. A huge shout out to Mrs. Chapman, Mrs. Wetter, Ms. Weller, as well as Jamie Altman and her team. With strategic planning this year, Mrs. Altman and her third grade team and the third grade team was actually able to add an additional 30-minute test prep intervention on top of the title program for about six weeks. And I really do think that that helped boost our scores. I just wanted to take a quick moment to just give some shout outs. I love that our school does not only have high academic expectations, but it also makes time to celebrate and create memorable moments for our kiddos. And I'm sure that many of you are aware of the elf hunt that took place last week with our one and only here in the middle in full elf attire sitting out at the sign in very cold weather for over 30 minutes greeting the students and families as they came in. We also had almost 30 staff members that participated in it either in full elf attire again or wearing ears as elves in disguise for little elementary kiddos to go around and take selfies with the classes. So I know it was a little bit of an interruption, but it was it was an awesome, awesome day. And it just really neat to see a K-12 building come together like that. A huge thanks to Mrs. Montgomery for her creative planning, just making this a magical day for students and staff. I don't think I stopped smiling. Another huge shout out to our teachers and staff for the many hours that they put into making this school look so magical for the Christmas season. The last five years, they have really worked selflessly behind the scenes after school hours just to bring smiles to the face of our kiddos. A huge thank you to Shelley Weatherhead. She puts many, many hours into the time before it starts decorating as well as helping tear down everything and making sure everything gets out into the dumpster before we all leave for break. So I just wanted to give a few shout outs. That's it.
Thanks, Kirsten.
On November 15th, the Hicksville staff participated in a two-hour in-service where we received training on the Alice protocols and procedures. Gary Taylor, an expert from the sheriff's office, led this in-service. The training included information about the Alice program, critical elements like situational awareness, alert strategies, informing, procedures, evacuation protocols, effective lockdown techniques, and counter-strategies. The purpose of the in-service was to ensure that the staff is equipped with the latest protocols, enhancing their preparedness and ability to respond effectively in critical situations. Some exciting things of attacking it across categorical classroom. One of those exciting things included Mrs. Deal and Mrs. Sell working together with their students to prepare a full Thanksgiving feast with all the trimmings. The first thing they did in preparation was to find the recipes that they wanted to prepare. Then they went grocery shopping after they prepared their lists. And then finally, they were able to make their their meal. It was a day and a half process, which most Thanksgiving meals are. But they got a full hands-on experience of what it's like to cook a Thanksgiving meal. And the best part about it was that we got to participate in the eating of that Thanksgiving meal because the students brought us plates down to enjoy as well. It was a great activity for the students that brought a lot of smiles and full tummies and memories for them for years to come. Mrs. Deal's class continues to take orders and make delectable treats for the staff every week. Some of those treats include pumpkin bars, buffalo chicken dip, breakfast sliders, fruit pizza, spinach dip, strawberry cookies, nacho dip, pull apart pizza muffins, cheesy chicken chowder, cheesy hamburger soup, and many, many more items. For those in need of a specially-made Friday coffee, the service extends to that, too. The program allows our students to learn so many social life and vocational skills through a hands-on approach. I'm very thankful for this program for our students. And a big shout out goes to Amanda Lee Coffee for their invaluable support in making our coffee cart project possible.
All right, now that we're all hungry, I'll update the middle school part of things. This past Friday, our seventh and eighth graders performed as part of the show, Christmas at the Huber. The high schoolers in the seventh and eighth grade performed. And I just want to say congratulations on an awesome show. Mrs. Wendell and Mr. Kohlmeier did an awesome job. And we're just really proud of our students for the performance that they put on. Tomorrow, December 19th, our fifth and sixth graders, our band and choir will be performing here at the school. The band portion of the concert will take place in the gym and the choir portion will take place in the commons. So we're looking forward to that tomorrow night. Recently, Mrs. Chamberlain, our guidance counselor, led an activity in our middle school or Random Notes of Kindness. We've done this in the past, but each individual in the middle school, students and teachers, each write a note to someone else. They draw cards out with the name on them and they write a special note to if it's a teacher they draw or a student that they draw. And so everybody writes a note and then they receive a note as well. And that note either goes on their locker if they're a student or goes on their classroom door if they're a teacher. And this is just another great thing we do here at Hicksville to promote a positive and inclusive atmosphere here at our school. So we thank Mrs. Chamberlain for leading that. This Friday, December 22nd, our middle school will have a Christmas fun day. So the different grade levels will be participating in different activities with some of these including Christmas movies, Christmas games, trivia, crafts, dodgeball, and much more. Our teachers are working hard to make that a fun day for our students. And we're just really excited for this day. Our students have worked extremely hard this first half of the year. So we're excited to do something fun for for them and just to celebrate them a little bit. And then finally, on Wednesday, January 10th, our eighth graders will visit Fort County Career Center to explore some of the different programs that they offer over there. And then when they return in the afternoon, our students, our eighth graders, will then visit the Hicksville Agricultural Program where they will learn about all the different opportunities offered here through this new career tech program that we now have at Hicksville. So we're really excited for our students to explore those different opportunities and learn about that a little bit. That's the middle school.
Thank you.
All right, high school. I wanted to give you guys an update on our efforts to offer more ACT prep to our students. So we're going to be rolling out a new ACT prep initiative with our juniors right after Christmas break. What we did is we purchased an online curriculum through a company called Honda College. And this consists of different online modules for the different subject areas. What we're going to do is incorporate this into what our teachers currently do in their classrooms. And then we're going to be doing a lesson. And then we're also going to set up a full-based curriculum. And that will be based on the current learning plan that we have. And then we're going to be launching that on September 19th. Thank you all for your thought. Please be set up with their own accounts and then able to access that content by taking the video lessons and practice tests through the major of the students. The company's rest is basically averaging 35 points. And that's for students that want to be in the competition. So I'm hopeful that we can have a good, good core students and they can be sent to the academy and get them to the college. And we'll probably help them. And we will be doing a special presentation. And we'll probably not, um, hold this content. And I'm rolling that out to get them to have a good experience. Much going on in the high school recently. Hicksville hosted our first ever wrestling invitational on December 9th. The invitational consisted of 11 schools and our wrestling staff and athletes. I would like to say more, did an excellent job of throwing the entire event. Very welcoming to all the guests here in our building. In our very own break, this is first in the weight class. Very proud of the conference members, all wrestlers, and the women and the gentlemen. Past Friday, we have our annual K-12 physical trials house competition assembly. Congratulations to House of Katia for coming out as the winner. And then this week, we have home bases and high schools competing against each other for the title of best person for our door decorating contest. Three to rate check them out. I saw they posted on our school Facebook page today. So we have voting going on through Wednesday to meet the overall consensus. We also have surprises for our students during one time this week. So this is fun. I want to thank the Hicksville East Go for sponsoring some of that that I'm doing for our students and our staff. And this Friday, our high school students will begin their day with a female high school talent show in the gym. The students will display their various talents, both individually and in groups, and for their fellow classmates. Following this, we'll be bringing back the Dominion Cup this year to Hicksville. And I remember this was the annual all-day competition in Hicksville unfolding two years. And this year has been turned into a competition of class versus class. And our own students. So they will compete class versus class to take the title of the Dominion Cup champion. And I want to thank the house leaders for putting all that together. They're bringing out different events, competitions, tournaments, right? So it's very, very important for us. Couple of events after we get back. On Thursday, January 4th, the finance county commissioners will be holding a session in our field house. So this is an effort that they have within their office to visit their schools and conduct their regular sessions all site. You know, it's coming. So this has been working with their office to coordinate this event. And then it doesn't have the government, but it's kind of sort of making deals for them in action. We look forward to hosting commissioners here at Hicksville on January 4th. So we're going to be doing a Then on Friday, January 5th, our financial literacy class will be participating in the annual real money, real world simulation. Several volunteers from area businesses will come to help simulate a real-life scenario for our students to go through as they learn about budgeting and the finances of all life. So I have to ask you.
Awesome, thanks.
I wanted to thank you for inviting us to the luncheon the day that they did the career workforce training. You know, I love the thinking outside the box and the good things for our kids. That was nice.
Thank you guys for coming. We also, so we held that and then I forgot to include my report. Eighth graders have their kind of career exploration day and our sophomores did that. And our students, sophomores, went to Fort County and then came and toured our new ad program. And our current students were so excited to share with the incoming sophomores that they went around to different stations and they actually like were running out of time. Like they were allotted five to 10 minutes for their station. And they had so much to share, like they ran out of time. So it was cool to see them sharing that with fellow classmates.
I love the opportunities, thanks.
So I've got a comment and a question.
Yeah.
So comment first. Thank you very much for the ACT prep. That's awesome. The question is in regards to that. Do we pay per student or how does that? So it would vary from year to year then, so it would be.
So I've been exploring different options. I was at a conference in October. We met with this company, they gave us a deal. It's just going to be our juniors in-house. You know, I Our students in-house. Not that many students. Per student, kind of tailored for school. I met with them and they It's going to go well this year and see.
That's super, thank you.
Yeah, that's something we had been working on for years.
Talking about that for a long time.
Thank you very much.
Fort County report.
No report tonight.
Keith?
Yep. Not much. I wanted to let you know that the sound system in the main gym is on the outs. It's been causing issues for quite some time now with coming in and out, especially during games, assemblies, the microphones. And we've had some of the amps rebuilt. I think they've all been rebuilt at one time, but we've had a couple of different companies look at it now. And we need to get it fixed because it just doesn't work properly and with the ballgames and stuff. So we've had a couple of different companies giving us quotes. Haven't made a decision on that yet, but I wanted to give you a heads up on that. There's four amps. One of them is completely gone. So do we replace just the one? Or do we replace the other three that have already been rebuilt once? So we got a couple of different prices and we'll review it and talk with both of them and see what's our best option. But that stuff's 15 years old and the microphones are shot. And that's a, so yeah. But we're going to have a little bit of an expense coming. A little bit more than a little bit of expense, but not the end of the world. We'll manage. And then we'll have a decent sound system in the gym. I just wanted to, you know, comment on the on the principals and their reports. And it sounds like, oh gosh, all we do around here is eat and have fun and parties and assemblies. And and we do do a lot of that at different times. But, you know, and I know there was a comment in the community about, don't we have a workout here? And, you know, we do. And I think when you look at our scores every spring, that it's not like it's up and down and up and down. It's pretty consistent where our value-added scores are at. And we're right, you know, we're way, way up there. So out of 600 and some schools, we're always in 50 or less towards the top. So, yeah, we play a lot, but we also work hard when it's time to work. And, you know, I'm proud of the kids for that, so. The other thing is I wanted to take a minute to recognize Mrs. Jones. I know you knew this was coming, Mrs. Jones. It's her last night as a board member. And, you know, I just want to say that, you know, for eight years, Mindha has been on our board. But prior to that, she served 35 years in the classroom, right? So a total of 43 years, that's like four decades. I didn't even know you were that old, Mrs. Jones.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did a little bit of math. So if there's like, you know, average of 20 kids in a room for 35 years, that's like 700 kids that she probably had more than that anyhow. Within her rooms over that period of time, a lot of lives you've touched. And then being a board member for eight years and continuing on with providing the district with good quality decisions and good thought on the things that we've got going out here, it's been really valuable for us as a school, for us as a board, for me personally. And I'm grateful, as I'm sure everybody else is, our board members and our community, to have you there for as long as we did. I wish you all the best, as we all would with your new adventure. But knowing you, you're probably still not going to, you'll still be teaching or something somewhere at church or somewhere. And that's an awesome thing because that's who you are. So a big round of applause for you.
Oh, my. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Indispensable wisdom. If I had to sum it up. Is that it?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Well, what you said about playing, partying hard or studying and working hard. But Mrs. Kaufman hit on that earlier when you said, what, 59% was our efficient score on third grade tests and the state average was 49%? So Yeah, it's 49? So there's an example again that what we're doing here is is working pretty good. Obviously better than what's going on throughout the state.
And that's an end-of-the-year test, right, that they take?
Yeah. 48%.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's an end-of-the-year exam. So obviously that's going to be much higher in the spring.
And I want to say last year we were at 38%.
And do you know where we ended up then?
At the end? What I recommend for everyone is
100%?
So.
Good, awesome.
Just like us, when we're happy, we're more productive.
Right.
When kids love coming here, they learn more, they're more productive.
Yeah. You know, I've said this before too, but I remember, you know, my 11th year in this spot. And my first year, there were, I don't know, suspensions all the time. I know I did a couple of expulsions. But then, you know, we started our Hicksville Initiative thing and that changing that dynamics and culture of our building to a positive environment. And I can honestly say, and I can pull the records and show you, but our suspensions have, I mean, are just minimal. You know, I mean hardly for some silly reason that a kid, you know, did something that they shouldn't have done, which they're children and kids and they make mistakes. But nothing major. I mean, life-altering, you know, our kids are amazing. And and I think that says something about what's going on around here, the positivism and and how the kids react and then how they participate in not just, you know, academics, but everything. And we hear this all the time when our kids go to a different school and represent our school. And people call me and I have received countless emails and stuff from different people that they always comment on our kids. So that's a great thing. Proud of them. Sorry, Mike, didn't mean to interrupt.
I'm glad you added to it. I was kind of hoping you would.
Okay, now for the boring part.
Thanks, Mr. Mathen.
It wasn't just your part.
Essential, essential.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Jen.
Paul's thinking.
Thanks, Eric. Minutes from the regular board meeting on November 20, 2023. Treasurer's consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of November 30, 2023. Financial statements for November 2023. Approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2024 as presented. Total general fund resources of $16,701,399.71. And total resources for all funds of $21,463,469.36. Approve fiscal year 2024 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $14,327,942.22. And total appropriations for all funds of $16,942,876.55. Accept the following donations. $450 from PTO for Elementary Principals Fund. $5,434 from Jim Schmidt Family of Dealerships for football. Miller Welder from Arc Solutions, estimated value of $1,999. Any essential commentary?
Well, I think on the mention on the football, I believe that was for the timers, the time clocks each end of the field. Is that right? So that was the Jim Schmidt Family Dealership donation. And of course, the welders from Arc Solutions is continuing to upgrade our ag program there, which is a nice update. I don't know if we wanted to talk a little bit about a grant that we have recently submitted.
We can certainly mention the, yes.
We have, just this past Friday, a lot of work was done by Mr. Highlander, Mrs. Wyman, Mr. Nate Farrell, missing others probably, Jane Myers. Put a lot of work together to apply for a $2.5 million grant from the state of Ohio for the education, for the career tech education program. So anyways, January 26th, we were to find out whether we were successful with our application. But the idea is to really pump up that program and to provide a facility with equipment and supplies that we can really offer to our students.
Super.
Great.
No, by the end of January.
Grants are
But I did a lot of work putting this stuff together. And grants, there's a lot of, a lot of writing and a lot of calculating and determining what you need to get in there to give yourself the best shot.
Nathan was essential with that. I mean, he really did a ton. Amazing. He was a little stressed about it, too.
Well, it's not every day we have an opportunity for two and a half million dollars.
Right, right.
Money that our community doesn't have to pay for.
So we haven't got it, but let's pray that we
Let's hope it does.
We get a large portion of that.
Even if we don't get it, the fact that the team is actively engaged in pursuing stuff like that says an enormous amount. That's awesome, so.
Also, I don't know if we, it's not part of the consent items, but when did you want to talk about some of the other stuff?
That's fine, no, it's fine. I just had several questions. We had talked last, we've talked several months now about, you know, the field house, where we are with our funds and then possibly paying, you know, back that loan early or kind of where we are. And then I'd also asked Mike, just, you know, unfortunately, not great news coming out of the hospital. Just looking, you know, we just had our five-year forecast last month, which was wonderful. And it was, your notes were great and stuff. But, you know, what kind of impact could that possibly have, you know, on the school district and what that might look like? And just some of those kind of things that we've talked about previously.
Well, as far as Community Memorial Hospital, our trainer is hired through them. We've contracted through them for a trainer $15,000 a year. Actually, until a couple of years ago, there was no charge at all. So that will be a big question. Talked to Mr. Hawke, talked to Mr. Countryman. If they're no longer able to provide us with an individual for our athletic training position, where will we go? There's going to have to be some research. You know, Fairview's in the same situation, Ezra's in our same situation. What kind of costs will be associated with it? If we have to pay for a full one, it's probably going to be in excess of $60,000. So we'll have to see there. A smaller type of effects that may be more inconvenient than anything. Bus drivers have to continually be checked for drug and alcohol. That's just part of being a school bus driver to ensure that safety. And it's very convenient to go two blocks to get that done. Well, obviously, if they're not there, we'd have to look at another avenue for that. I don't know their, what effects could have on our revenue source. I sure hope if something does happen, everybody that is employed there quickly finds gainful employment someplace. And so I feel for them, they got to go search. But maybe it'll turn out better in the long run if this happens. So I don't know if you had any other specific questions regarding?
You know, it affects all of us.
Yeah.
And those are things I didn't even have even thought about. So then moving on to our, our field.
For the field house, originally, many people recall that the district put aside $3 million back in 2016 for a field house academic addition. And we ended up taking out a lease for an additional $3.5 million, so a total of $6.5 million. At the moment, we sit here with a fund balance of $342,000, outstanding encumbrances of about $271,000. So we still have obligations to complete that project. However, about $52,743 that was part of a cash allowance that was built in, that has not been touched. And therefore, that should be money coming back into the kitty. And therefore that should be money coming back into the kitty. Putting this at essentially, uh, money under, under budget by $124,000. However, there are still, um, several purchase orders out there. One of them is $234,000. That is to the contractor, Alexander Beeboat. It's primarily for, one was for that allowance, so that $52,700. But punch list items, project closeout submittals, um, that's about $175,000 right there. And I was talking to Mr. Bassett and he is struggling to get them to provide us with the documents. The, the submittals from the project. And you know Eric, he's, he's gonna beat them. He's gonna beat that drum hard, long and steady. So I expect him to be successful here at some point in time. If we don't get him, we don't pay the money. In addition to that, there is, um, cameras, some cameras that he's waiting for some parts. And if, if that doesn't come in, those parts don't come in, we'll have to look at going another direction. But it all kind of stemmed back to, to supply chain issues that were happening a couple of years ago. And just one thing led to another and he hasn't, hasn't received that yet. And there's, there's another one for $21,000 for some items. So we'll have to see where those goes as they finish things out. But the punch list is mostly, there's some stuff on the roof. There were scratches up there, some dings and dents that, um, he is having them fix. And then there's some on the outside exterior punch list. I believe pretty much everything on the punch list within the building has been taken care of. It's my understanding. Let's keep knowing something different. It was also asked about, well, would we entertain paying off that, um, lease early? As of right now, I'd say the answer is no. That lease came in at 1.89% is what we're paying on the interest for that. Currently, we are earning 5.57% with our investment in Star Ohio, which is pretty much the same interest we're getting with money at Premier Bank here in town. Actually, they've, they've gone five basis points over that. So we have some pretty good apps, options to invest our money. And, um, of course, Star would have to continue to offer at 5.57% for the next five years, six years, which probably won't happen. There's talk about maybe interest rates going down, but if it stayed at that rate, we would make $340,000 over the remaining cost of our interest payments. So we can always relook at it. If interest rates drop and drop and drop, we, we could look at it and decide maybe if we want to pay it off early or not. But, um, like many, uh, loans and lease agreements, most of the interest is upfront. So as it goes on, you're paying less. So we'd have to consider that if we'd ever do that.
You know, Jen, that was kind of a goal of mine, that I wanted to have that project done since I did that before I left. So that's not why I'm not leaving. But hearing Mike and him, and I talking about that, I mean, it really financially, it doesn't make any sense to do that when you're, when you're making that amount in interest. So keep a close eye on it like he said and, and, uh, uh, you know, we have enough money, we can pay it off right now. But he might have a heart attack if he did that. But, uh, you know, I, it just makes good financial sense to do it that way. And we're sitting in a good spot with it. I don't think we're, you know, so I think we should keep doing what Mike's recommending here and who knows? Maybe I will be here still when it gets paid off.
Yeah, it's advantageous to stay profitable, no doubt about it.
Excellent job. Thank you. You answered the questions thoroughly.
All right. Any other questions?
And a side note, I still can't, it just personally, it shocks me that they're not getting the bills to us to get paid so they can, you know, be done with the project. And I fully believe that Eric will stay on top of them, but it just annoys me a little bit.
Um, I, I've seen it happen before at other places and it's amazing to me how contractors get near the end. There's still money out there and they just move on. And it's really hard to get them to come back and finish something.
They don't have a good accountant working for them.
I would think they do, but.
Well, I think too, I think you mentioned, you know, the supply, uh, a few years ago, mopped things up for a lot, a lot of people. And I know they were waiting for stuff, so maybe that this gets a little bit shuffled up in the, in the end of everything. But you're right, Eric, it'll stay on them. So it'll get taken care of eventually.
And Mike, just like Galen said to Aaron, thanks for all the work on the grant. You put a ton of work into getting that lease agreement. That saves us a lot of interest. Thank you.
I didn't want to say anything, but we don't have any leaks out there, never did. Like the original building, we had all those leaks and dealt with that for years and years and years.
A long time.
Yeah, we, we, they did a great job building it and we should be really proud of it. So it was really good.
Awesome. Okay. Anything else? Anybody?
And it was essential information.
And it wasn't boring either. Okay, wonderful. It's boring to listen to me read it. Roll call, please. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Minda.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steph.
Sorry, we were talking.
That's okay. Recommend to approve the MOU between the board, HEA, and Melissa Miles. And further to approve a long-term substitute employment contract for Melissa Miles. Any commentary or discussion on that? Roll call, please. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin? Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Eric. Recommend to approve Alex Moore as a certified substitute for the 2023-2024 school year. Roll call, please. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin? Motion's approved, five to zero. Yes. Sorry. I got ahead of you. Right, I was writing and talking at the same time. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Minda. Recommend to approve Emily Weatherhead as a classified substitute for the 2023-2024 school year. Roll call, please. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Bingo. Another motion?
I'll move.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Steph. Recommend to approve an audit agreement between Hicksville Exempted Village Schools and the Auditor of State for fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. The estimated cost of service is $19,844.
They've been here now a good two weeks, I think. I think they're moving along all right. Uh, it was the day they had five auditors here, about killed me. Um, because it's like one person comes in and asks for something and then three minutes later, somebody else does, et cetera. So. But it also will move this thing along and, and we'll get past it and move on. So, um, I think everything's going all right.
They haven't brought up anything that's been an issue, put it that way.
And they're awesome. I mean, we don't have my conference room. No, that's okay. We'll work around it.
All right. Roll call, please. Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thanks, Minda. Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve the wrestling team to attend the following overnight match, January 26, 2024 to January 27, 2024 at Lima. Recommend to approve the following new revised Board of Education bylaws policies as presented. Unless you got any?
No, I just wanted to comment that those are the ones that we talked about in the group session. The only one that's not there is, uh, uh, the flow chart, but they're working on that, so.
Thank you for updating those and sitting through them and going through all of those.
No problem. Thank you for reading them all.
I'll have to switch screens. Roll call, please. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Now we'll go to an addendum to the agenda. Need a motion?
I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Eric. Recommend to approve the resignation from Shelby Souls as mat made advisor. Roll call, please. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Sorry, I forgot to navigate back to the agenda here. Unannounced guests.
Are we doing all the business?
Are we doing all business and discussion?
Sorry, I guess I skipped. Oh yeah, sorry. We're, we're almost to you, gang. Sorry about that. Old business. I scrolled down too far. Do we have any old business before we get to the unannounced guests?
Okay, I would, I would like to thank the community of Hicksville for allowing me to serve on the school board for the past eight years. I have absolutely loved getting to be a teacher here for 35 years. And then getting to serve on the board. This is an exceptional school district. Exceptional because of the people that are employed and serve wholeheartedly. Exceptional because of the families and their involvement. Truly exceptional because of the involvement of the people in this community. I am constantly amazed at the financial support and the personal time that is invested by businesses and individuals. I want to still get to be involved in any way possible to continue to be a supporter and a cheerleader of this district. Thanks to each of you for your time and your service and your friendship. Keep up the excellent work.
I'll have to call.
Thanks, Minda.
Oh. Those are always good. See, exceptional. I knew I'd cry.
Any other old business? Any discussion? Any idea when the commencement date for 2025 is going to be? I know that's thinking way ahead, but are we, are, are we still on the labor, on the, on the Memorial Day?
You're talking about 2024?
2025. I was just curious.
We haven't done that calendar yet, but it'll be around, same around.
All right. Okay. I was just trying to plan ahead. I'm trying to plan.
Well, next year, next year, that would be next year, right?
Yeah.
The way Christmas falls, we'll probably have a long break at Christmas.
That's good.
Well, maybe, maybe. I'm sure we'll work every day out, so.
All right.
Yeah, so we'll have to wait and see what that looks like.
I was just wondering.
We'll know though, uh, Galen, here in the next few months, because we already started working on that.
All right. So finally, I was so excited to see a lot of fresh faces here because nobody ever comes to these meetings. So I'm just happy to have people. That's why I was so excited to get you guys, so. Everybody has four minutes. Who'd like to go first?
I can go first.
Love to hear from you.
My name's Mary Green. Um, I have a high school, senior high school wrestler who's male and a eighth grade that's female. We just wanted to bring up a concern that, that we had, um, with our girl wrestlers. I'm not good at public speaking, so if I stutter, I apologize. In 2020, approximately 10% of high school wrestlers were female. Women's wrestling has increased by over 27% over the last two years, making it one of the fastest growing high school sports in the country. During the 2021 to 2022 season, there were more than 34,000 girls wrestling at a high school level in the country. Hawaii is the first state to sanction girls wrestling in 1998, 25 years ago, and six years before it was an Olympic event. Ohio sanctioned varsity girls wrestling in 2022, making it the 33rd state to sanction. Currently, there are 44 states that list girls wrestling as sanctioned regular season and postseason wrestling as of October 18th of this year. There are over 124 colleges that have women's wrestling with Baldwin Wallace, Hiram College, John Carroll, Lourdes and Tippin, to name a few in our state of Ohio. Plus Indiana Tech and Adrianian Colleges that are just across the border in Indiana and Michigan and nine state, nine schools in Pennsylvania. As I stated earlier, girls wrestling is one of the fastest growing sports in the country. Male wrestling numbers were actually decreasing, including being dropped as an Olympic sport in February 2013, in part due to concern for lack of women's competitions at Olympic levels, having only introduced women freestyle competitions in 2004. By September 2013, wrestling had been reinstated with more women's classes added. Teaching girls wrestling is different than teaching boys wrestling. Girls are built different, they move different, and they wrestle different. Females have much stronger hips while males have stronger arms and torsos. The strength is the biggest part. The girls just get out muscled when they have to wrestle boys every week. It's good to have them where they can compete against each other because technique-wise, they're all taught the same. Women's ligaments are generally more lax than men and make them more vulnerable to dislocation and instability. At the same weight class, boys will generally be stronger than girls due to increased muscle density. This increased muscle strength around the shoulders will make boys less likely to get injured than girls, especially if they're wrestling each other. The other issue is concussions. The boys are stronger, so they will generate more forceful blows to the head and neck. The boys have stronger neck muscles too, which help prevent concussions when they are wrestling each other. A girl wrestling a boy will be exposed to higher impact forces and have less neck muscle protection. My son has not had to wrestle a girl in live bouts, mostly because of him being in a higher weight class. However, he is a girl in his class, weight class at practice and he has done judo with a girl during junior high. As most of you know, my son is a fairly strong person. He is not going to be outmuscled by just about any female, regardless of age or weight. He could be out technique, however, if he is a female, however, if he is a female looking at the lights in eight seconds, how is that of a benefit to the females to learn technique or for him to better his skills? I believe boys and girls wrestlers should practice together, but separating the girls for competition would be advantageous to them. Girls flourish and overcome self-doubt in their own space as they are mostly beginners. Starting in junior high, seven out of 10 girls failed they do not belong in sports, while fully a third do not feel encouraged to play sports. After puberty, girls confidence plummets and half quit sports. However, sports is exactly what helps girls achieve and maintain competence. A 2019 NHCS study found that women 18 to 24 who play sports are two times more likely to be confident than those who do not. The top three benefits of sports are in percentages as reported, 62% reported increased confidence, 64%. increased confidence, 64% for teamwork, and 54% with increased leadership skills. Last year, I personally took three of our middle school girl wrestlers to a meet in Perry, Ohio, two and a half hours away. There were 21 all-female middle school teams represented. We had two first-year and one second-year wrestler, and our team placed seventh out of 21 teams. My senior wrestler son, George, can attest that coaching the female wrestlers is very different than males, but it is just, if not more, rewarding. This year at this meet, there are 33 teams. I brought this meetup to Dave Moore and James Egley, the high school and middle school coaches, as all the girls that went last year felt this meet was of great benefit to them. And what was advised, our school policy is that they will not have athletic functions on Sunday. So for that reason, they do not want us to be part of it. Meanwhile, as many of us in the digital age are, we can follow Tenora and Fairview, both GMC schools, plus Archibald and Wrestling Girls programs on Facebook or Instagram. All these schools have wrestled at high school and middle school tournaments in the past two weeks, in Bryan and in Archibald. While the ultimate goal would be to have enough numbers here in Hicksville for separate teams, we would like equal opportunity for female competition. This competition is out there, but primarily on Sundays doing, due to high school and middle school competitions being on Saturdays. Our girls getting to compete in one girls-only tournament, Tenora, on December 27th, is not equitable to the number of boys meets and does not prepare our girls for the post-Green Meadows Conference season as these girls have their own separate path to a girls' state title. If we want to give our girls the opportunity to wrestle girls, we have to find these tournaments, pay the fees, and handle transportation. Whether it is something that the board members or administration personally agree with or do not, it is our duty to our girls to afford them the same opportunities we give to our boys. If we do not, what are we teaching them? That they are undeserving, that they are second place, or do not measure up, or that they are just not as important? Being the parent of a teenage or even a pre-teen daughter can be exasperating and trying to say the least, given the emotional rollercoaster that they are on and the judgment they feel, whether real or implied, at school, through their peer groups, social media, and even from their parents. When these girls' meets are there within an hour of school and our girls are not invited or not, it is not mentioned to them, it gives them, gives the impression to our girls that they are less than the boys, that they do not warrant the recognition, and that's a message in 2023 that we have got to get away from. The wrestling program has done well in the last few years with our girls getting girls cut singlets with higher necklines and shorter torsos and the locker rooms in the fieldhouse. However, we are just asking for equity for our girls. Thank you. Sorry.
Mrs. Green?
You did fine. Thank you.
We realize that you went past the four minutes, but I don't think.
I'm sorry.
It's no problem. I don't think everybody's speaking anyhow, so we just, yeah, thank you. Sorry.
No, you said exactly what I was thinking, so.
My name is Nadia King. I'm a 15-year-old freshman on the Hicksville High School wrestling team. Yeah. This is my third year in wrestling. Today, I'm here to tell you why I and other girls including Michaela Waplow are seventh grade. Sorry. Catherine Green, eighth grade, and Melanie Rizzo, seventh grade, should be wrestling at girls' tournaments and not boys' ones. Currently on the schedule, we have one girls' only tournament for junior high and high school, which is the Tenora Rams Girls Wrestling Invitational on December 27, 2023. As a high schooler, I will also have a girls'-only regionals tournament, and if I qualify, a girls'-state wrestling tournament later in the season. But for the rest of the season, us girls will be wrestling predominantly boys. Us girls are all very passionate about girls' wrestling. We want to see other girls have the same opportunity as the boys' teams. We are comfortable wrestling guys at practice, but when it comes to tournaments and competition, we don't want to wrestle guys. Injuries always happen, no matter what match it is, but when it comes to guys versus girls, girls get injured more often. Wrestling is my favorite sport, and I don't want to have to give it up. If I wasn't passionate about girls' wrestling, I wouldn't be here right now. We would rather wrestle girls at tournaments instead of guys, just due to the biological difference, the strength difference. I've also been told by many other people that there aren't just enough girls in the area to go to girls' tournaments. I think that is false. According to the Green Meadows Conference website, these are the teams in our conference with girls, with at least one girl on their high school team: Hicksville, Tenora, Fairview, Antwerp, Edgerton, Montpelier, Ayersville, and Palding. The only school in our GMC that does not have a girl on their high school team is Wayne Trace. Other girls' teams that are less than an hour and a half drive are Bryan, Archibald, Napoleon, Liberty Center, Columbus Grove, Wassion, Woodmore, and many, many more. When I went to the Bryan Girls' Tournament on Sunday, December 10th, there were many, many schools that drove over an hour and a half, some even over two to three hours, to wrestle girls only. The fact that we were not, I was not told about this competition was, made me very upset. The fact that I wasn't even given the option to compete was even more upsetting. Edgerton's high school coach and Tenora's coach approached me and my grandfather at that tournament and asked why I wasn't wrestling. Tenora asked me where my singlet was. I told them I couldn't participate. They were not happy with that. Edgerton's coach even offered to take me to the girls' tournaments. As long as all paperwork was filed and everything was properly done, I could compete with them under Hicksville's singlet and on Hicksville's points, Edgerton would be coaching me. The Ohio High School Athletic Association Wrestling Manual for the 2023 to 2024 season states this on page four: "A school that sponsors girls' wrestling and boys' wrestling shall maintain separate schedules for girls and boys." So far, that is only two meets for high school and one for junior high. An article on the OHSAA website posted this on March 6, 2023: "The growth in participation and increase in popularity that girls' wrestling has experienced in Ohio in recent years figures to only be the beginning of bigger things to come for the sport." It was only a short time later that calls for the OHSAA to sanction girls' wrestling began. The Ohio High School Wrestling Coaches Association had a state girls' dual tournament during the 2020 to 2021 season, and the OHSAA announced on January 3, 2022, that girls' wrestling would be sanctioned as an emerging sport beginning that winter. An article on FlowWrestling.org posted on September 7, 2023, states this: Quote, "Girls' high school wrestling has seen double-digit percentage increases. In seven of the last eight years, the NFHS has published its participation survey. It didn't publish the data during 2019 to 20 and 2020 to 21 school years due to COVID-19, but nothing quite like this. The high school girls' wrestling went from 31,654 participants in 2021 to 2022 to 49,127 girls in the 2022 to 2023 season. The 55.2% growth was the highest increase since 1993." I am currently in contact with Derek Cochran about him becoming a volunteer coach for the girls' junior high and high school wrestling teams. I'll be speaking to Coach Moore tomorrow, and I will work with Coach Moore on the logistics about this. We're hoping if we can have him as a volunteer and separate girls from guys, we are able to get more girls' tournaments. In conclusion, we believe all the girls, junior high and high school, should be sanctioned from our boys' teams and compete in girls' tournaments. Even if there are very few girls in Hicksville wrestling at the moment, we are a growing program, and we would like more opportunities to prove ourselves. By providing us with more mat time with girls, we are given the chance to show other Hicksville girls that they can wrestle. Thank you.
Thank you. You did great, too.
I'll try to keep this under four minutes. I'm Rod Conkle, longtime coach for Hicksville. I was on the very first wrestling team in Hicksville in 1974, and I watched the sport evolve, and I've watched it grow, and I've watched it sink, and I've watched it come back, and I love what Hicksville's doing with their program, with their athletics. And, but I'm very concerned about women wrestling men, and I think there's a big safety concern there, and I think this needs to be brought to the forefront. Because of, especially when they get into the high school level, the men become much superior in sense in their strength. And it becomes an issue at practice and in the meets especially because of an added aggression from the men to the women because they don't want to get beat by a girl. And there's a lot of things that really get the men juiced up, and they really can be more aggressive toward the women, and I don't like that about the sport. And I think that it's time to look at a progression of this sport of wrestling. As a dinosaur myself, wrestled for Ohio State, and I see this sport evolving into this. And wrestling, what I was told, what is the fastest growing sport in America, in America? I don't know about the whole world, but in America. And I love watching girls wrestling girls. I had a girl that wanted to wrestle, and I was coaching at the time, and I would not let her. There's a lot of parents out there with this same concern that do not want that to happen. What's the answer? A girls' wrestling team would be a really good step in the right direction. I think that would be sending the message, a good message, to the female population of the school and outside the school and of the women that have already graduated to just watch this sport evolve into that, I think would be a fantastic thing. I'd agree to help with them in any way, not coach. I presently coaching in Wayne Trace with the little kids, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, because my grandson wrestles. I thought I was retired, but they pulled me out of the retirement. But I would love to see, I don't know what all can be done, and certainly that's why everybody's here, passionate about the sport. Would like to see Hicksville get part of the movement with the girls' wrestling, and I fully support it, and I wish them luck. Anything I could do, I would be of full service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty short, huh, Steph?
Yeah. It's not Sunday.
I'll be really quick. I am Curtis King, Nadia's father, and Mrs. Jones, I just wanted to say I didn't know this was going to be your last time, and you were the first teacher that I liked. You were my third grade teacher, and you were the first one, so congratulations. I also wanted to say that one day this week, I don't remember what day it was, but I heard, like, all night long, something was going on in my house, and I was annoyed by it. I get up at four in the morning to go to work, and there's a full pot of coffee for me and a note that says, hey, I made this at 4:00 AM. She was asleep on the couch, and we didn't help her. We didn't know she was writing a speech. We didn't know that she wanted to speak here. That was 100% her. So just to give you an idea, I'm so proud of her. She did that all on her own. She found all that stuff online on her own. Totally surprised us. And she just wants to wrestle. She just wants to compete, and she competed Saturday against a boy and got a concussion. He just toyed with her, picked her up, and slammed her down, concussion. So we tried it, you know, it was the first match, and we're like, okay, not a good idea. So, yeah, anything we can do to help you too. I don't, I'm not familiar with the process of how something like this gets created, or what the rules are, or, you know, what kind of financial thing that would take, or what kind of rules that need to be, you know. I'm not familiar with, like, all of that process or anything like that, so if you guys want to communicate with us in any way to, for us to be able to help you to put a program in like that, I'm sure we can get some community support together. There's a lot of people that, you know, we've been in touch with that, you know, support that we're here saying these things, and we don't want to be, you know, aggressive or abrasive about it or anything like that. We just want to make sure that our girls can compete. Thanks.
Anybody else? We'll take all that under advisement. We appreciate more than you guys know that you came here and wanted to share with that, share that with us, and we'll definitely take that under advisement. Think about it.
I would just like to say I appreciate Steph and Mr. Countryman for, I didn't know what the process was, and they kind of helped me through the process, so I appreciate them with that.
It wasn't 100% legit how we did it, but we bend the rules here a little bit, so.
It's all good.
All good. So, thank you, Mrs. Green.
So we'll be going into executive sessions, so I need a motion for that.
I'll move.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Steph. And we'll go in, say, quarter till. So 6:45. Make any other decisions, so that concludes the public portion of the meeting. Roll call? Roll call? Oh, yeah. When's our next meeting going to be? Fifteenth? On or before the 15th?
On or before, yes. Didn't we already decide?
Yeah. Monday, the 15th.
Thank you. God bless you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Monday is the 15th. That's when our normal meeting would be, right? But it's Martin Luther King Day, which is when we were trying to go in.
You guys are all.
You know what? If it works for the board, that's fine with me. I'll just exclude my principals. There's no reason for, in my opinion, for them to run back over here.
I don't get the day off, so it doesn't matter to me. What is it? I don't recall.
I don't know. Whatever. So.
You guys decide. I'll accommodate.
Tyler? 15th is good for me.
Yeah. Steph, you get to that?
Yeah, I'm all right. I have the day off.
We'll leave the 15th done. You guys won't need to, you can give me your results.
Were we going to go early, or are we going to meet at the regular time and do the work?
We could meet at the regular time, and it'll take a couple minutes, and then we can go right into the.
Okay, so we'll meet at the regular time, 5:30, Monday, the 15th of January. And roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, we'll return to adjourn. Yes. Oh, yeah. We'll return to adjourn after executive session.
Return to adjourn. Tyler, you stay, please? Yeah.